All right, I have the thumbs up. Good evening. The April 18th, the Coleson City Public Board Meeting is now called to order. And I am going to ask Air Student Representative Lexi to come up and guide us through the pledge. A moment of silence and an inspirational reading, please.
Can everybody please stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now for a moment of silence. Thank you. Please be seated. Good evening. I would like to start off this meeting by thanking everyone who serves in our nation's military. This includes significant others and the children of those who serve, as April is the month of the military child. Being near Langley, I'm sure everyone here knows somebody who serves or has helped our nation's military. So for my quote for tonight is, "You need to have faith in yourself, be brave, and take risks." You don't have to have it all figured out to move forward, and that is from Mauriti Bennett. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lexi. Ms. Burke, do we have any additions and/or modifications to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. And next I will call Ms. Purdy to come up and guide us through our recognitions.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Council, community members. Thank you for coming. We would like to recognize the March Student of the Month. She was not able to attend last month, and actually unfortunately she's not here this evening either. But I do want to go ahead and share a little bit about her, as this is televised, and perhaps people out there would love to know a little bit more about Tyra Williams. The March Student of the Month is a confident young woman who is unapologetically her own person. She's not afraid of the challenge and will fight hard for the causes that she believes in and the people that she cares about. She excels both as an athlete and a student and works very hard at both, which keeps her extremely busy. Academically, she has taken on a rigorous course load with numerous honors, advanced placement, and dual enrollment courses. And her efforts have earned her a 4.15 GPA, member into the NHS, Spanish Honor Society, and Mu Alpha Theta, which is our math honor society. She also serves as a senior chair representative for the SCA, is president of the Key Club, and an active Spanish club and Chick-fil-A Leadership Academy member. In addition, she's a founding member of Side by Side, which is a club that promotes diversity and inclusion at the high school. Outside of the classroom, this student has been a member of the varsity volleyball team and for all four years of high school, and was team captain this year. In her offseason, she plays for a club team and has competed at the state, regional, and even national level. During her freshman and sophomore year, she played varsity basketball as well. She's also an animal lover and has volunteered within the community by fostering dogs in addition to being volunteer at the Riverside Regional Medical Center. This young lady has also been known to send a card or sweet email of thanks and encouragement to her counselor from time to time, which I find very, very sweet. This fall, she will attend Morgan State University, where she plans to study biology, and where she will be a member of the Morgan State Bears volleyball team. Please join me in congratulating the March Student of the Month, Ms. Tyra Williams. Our April Student of the Month is a lovely young lady who has a wide variety of interests and abilities. From academics to the arts to information and technology, this student excels at everything she does. She works hard and has proven leadership skills that are sure to serve her well in the future. Academically, she also has taken on very rigorous courses, honors, advanced placement, dual enrollment, she's done it all. Her efforts have earned her a 4.19 GPA and membership into the National Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, the History Honor Society, and the Math Honor Society. She has served as president of the Excel Club for the past two years and is an active member of the Key Club and the Chick-fil-A Leadership Academy. Outside of the classroom, this student has been a member of the Pecosin Islander Marching Band for the duration of her high school and was one of the three drum majors this season. She's also a competitive dancer with Pecosin Dance Academy, where she's currently the team captain. Additionally, this woman has volunteered for countless hours with both Ivy Memorial Baptist Church and Parkview Baptist Church, as well as the Peninsula Rescue Mission. And for the past two summers, she has been employed with the Pecosin City Public Schools in the IT Department, and I can attest that she has done a wonderful job for them. This fall, she will attend Liberty University, where she plans to earn a bachelor degree in psychology and will go on to earn her master's in clinical mental health counseling. Please join me in congratulating our April Student of the Month, Ms. Alyssa White. Next, I would like to take a moment and recognize a Virginia State chess champion. During the last weekend of March, the U.S. Chess held their annual Virginia Scholastic Chess Open, where one of our own not only competed in the under-1400 division, but won the state title. Mr. Sue is not just a chess champion, although this is quite a feat in and of itself, but he's also a kind-hearted, incredible student, and all-around genuine person. We are so proud of John and this major accomplishment. Please join me in congratulating John Sue on being the 2023 Virginia State Chess Champion. That concludes my recognitions for this evening.
Thank you very much, Ms. Purdy. And families, we understand if you want to leave, we're just going to keep on moving on. Congratulations for your hard work. Next, we'll move on to our presentations and reports. Our first one is, we have our superintendent's update by Ms. Tillitt.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is a fairly brief update. As you'll remember, in our work session last month, we introduced the findings of Weldon Cooper and the first run of enrollment predictions. But I thought it would be wise tonight to share this with the community so they would see what's coming and what work we'll be doing in preparation for a welcome to increased enrollment in Pecosin schools over the next five years. The primary population increase is coming from the three new developments in our community. And most folks are aware of this, that we have the legacy of Pecosin, which we're anticipating around 500 homes, including single-family townhomes, and then three-bedroom apartments. And this is a three-year project that, as you know, if you've been on Victory Boulevard, is well underway. We also are expecting Bull Run, 21 lots, single-family homes, at least three or four bedrooms to be completed in July of '24. And then Quarter Creek, which is off of Robert Bruce Road, 32 single-family lots, three or four bedrooms, also being completed end of 2024. Brief background about Weldon Cooper, they are the state demographers. And so they study everything associated with demographics around the state of Virginia. And we have access to their work, and we've asked them to look specifically at our predictions over the next five years. So that's the formula that they use. At the bottom there, 34 new homes, and Pecosin yields about 15 additional kids every 34 homes. The chart, of course, you'll see is a steady increase in enrollment, with exception of Pecosin High School. And we'll talk a little bit about that anomaly next. We have had this small group of kids, and looking at the principals, they're aware of this, about 20-some less kids matriculate through our school system, and those kids are now in the seventh grade. As they go through high school, we'll actually see a decrease in enrollment because of that smaller population of students. Otherwise, the trend continues. From the young kids up, you'll see that steady increase over the years with enrollment yielding, as they predict, around 300 kids by 2027. So that's our challenge. We have about 2,100 kids now. Roughly 50 student increase for next school year. And over the next several years, we'll be planning for a steady increase of students as those developments unfold. The other interesting piece of information, I'll go back here to a previous slide that I failed to mention. Our enrollment is also growing without these developments, which is unusual for Virginia. We were told by the demographers that only a small number of school divisions are actually growing since the pandemic. Not sure why that's the case, perhaps online options, homeschooling options, some of the things that, some of the changes that happened as a result of the pandemic. But Pecosin students returned after the pandemic, and our population has steadily grown and stayed, which is good news for us. I was looking back several years at demographic data, and Pecosin's, as far back as I can look, the high point of our enrollment was in the 2010, '09, '10 school year. We were up around 2,300 students. So if you look back at this chart again, we'll be, you know, in that range again, a little over by 2027. So the chart that looked like this in enrollment from 2010 is now heading steadily back up. So it's an interesting curve as we expect enrollment. And what that means for us is we've, you know, we've got a work cut out for us to look at short term as soon as next school year, and then long-term options for how we accommodate facility-wise these students. Instructionally, the ADM, Average Daily Membership, actually yields the financial resources from the state formula to accommodate them instructionally. But facilities are all on the city. You know, we have to prepare for their arrival with space. And so as we talked in the last session, the work session last month, we're in really good shape in middle school, obviously, from the recent renovation. And the high school, and of course, the elementary school was built 15, 20 years ago with increased capacity. So we are in good shape there. The primary school, on the other hand, is crowded, so we don't have any room in the end. So we have to start planning for, even as soon as next year, perhaps a couple of classroom spaces, which we'll be talking about in the May work session. We want to allot some time to really delve into some options for the short-term solution there. And then we need to look at a longer term for 2026, '27, when we may have as many as 100 additional students in that building. So just some thoughts, I wanted for the public to be able to see what we're thinking about and planning. It's not catching anybody off guard. We are preparing for additional students, and it's really good news, because that's the sign of a growing prosperous community when you have more kids. Said many times that one of the great indicators of a healthy community is how you take care of your youngest and oldest citizens. And Pecosin does a great job in both of those areas. So we're thankful to always like to say thanks to the city council, of course, this board, and the citizens of Pecosin for taking care of these kiddos. And that concludes my report tonight. Any questions, comments about enrollment increase projections? Thank you.
And Amber Brown, if you'll come up with an instructional update?
All right. Good evening, Chair Helsel, Vice Chair Goodell, board members, staff, and of course, our Pecosin community and families. Tonight, we're going to do a few instructional updates, and we're going to start off with some proposed revisions to the current accreditation system for 2023, '24. So recently, the VDOE has gotten together, and they have proposed a few changes that have been brought up to the board. These are going to be phased out, phase one and phase two. They have not been adopted yet, but just to keep something on your radar so you know what is being discussed. In the January board meeting, they authorized these to begin in '24, '25, looking at the current system and then looking at the different aspects of changing what might be some of our proficiency levels, what would be some of our benchmarks to increase our benchmarks and to add some pass rates. We'll talk about that in just a second. So some of the key objectives they came up with were to set proficiency definitions and cut scores. We're going to be looking at using what our governor considers the best-in-class-aligned assessment and accountability system, building information portals and systems and tools that will allow parents to be able to see longitudinally their students' information and scores throughout the years in a multitude of assessments that are given, and also providing some effective and strategic support in prioritizing resources and ensuring that plans are developed for students who are not performing. So some of the indicators that they are looking at changing for accreditation, and this is where we get to whether our schools are meeting, are accredited, accredited with conditions or not accredited. The first is going to be adding annual pass rates, so that's up for discussion. And that would be somewhat of a bottom for scores. So for pass rates, math and English having an overall pass rate that has to be met in order to get such levels, such as a level two. They had talked about adjusting the benchmarks. Benchmarks can be adjusted in three different ways. The first way a benchmark can be adjusted is to modify the range of where a student performs. Another could be increasing the floor, so it could be that students receive, or schools receive accredited, if they are level two, 0 to 85%. Adding that floor would be, schools have to meet 50% and get to 85% in order to score in that range of a level two, and adding that floor, or increasing the floor from where it is now, it's 70% in some cases to 75%. All of these are up for discussion, and so specifics will be coming out later. Also, adding a student group or reporting category called lowest-performing students. Right now, we have our different categories: race, we have our economically disadvantaged, students with disability, and our English learners. However, having another category called lowest-performing students to truly identify the gap of students that are receiving the lowest scores, and are we making growth there, and are those students performing? Other proposed changes would be adjusting the improvement benchmarks and science and graduation rate to increase, suspending the use of chronic absenteeism right now, as we've seen post-COVID. With parents choosing to keep their students at home, these numbers truly fluctuate. They will still be reported, however, it will not be considered and factored into our graduation rate or our chronic absenteeism. And finally, suspending the dropout rate. Again, it will be considered and reported, however, it will not go into our accreditation. Other updates tonight, talking about a little collaborative leadership planning. So currently, we have a number of advisory committees. Our instructional leadership team has begun auditing some of our instructional programs at PCPS, and that is based on many of the comments that have been brought from our school board at our last meeting as well. Based on the questions and feedbacks that we received, we decided to begin with our gifted education and our tag program. So in order to increase the collaborative leadership and solicit feedback from all of our stakeholders, we're going to strengthen our existing advisory committees and add some others. Currently, members of our school board serve on external committees, as well as a few PCPS advisory committees. Chair Helsel sits on our Board of Directors for WHRO, and Dr. Goodell sits on the Board of Directors for New Horizons. In addition, we have members who serve on some of our advisory committees in-house. Our current advisory committees that include parents, and we're hoping to include a few students as appropriate this upcoming year, are the Gifted Education Advisory Committee, also known as GAC. We have the Special Education Advisory Committee, CAC. The Student Health Advisory Board, SHAB. And then our Career and Technical Education, CTE Advisory Committee. Within these committees, whenever we apply for a grant or when we have different programs that come about, using this as an arm to help with feedback in the process and also approving. So for Carl D. Perkins, this is a yearly grant that is applied for from schools with Carl D. Perkins funds. The purpose through the strengthening career and CTE for the 21st Century Act is just developing more fully the academic knowledge and technical and employability skills of secondary education students and post-secondary education students who elect to enroll in career and technical education programs and programs of studies. One of the goals we have moving forward is to truly strengthen our CTE courses and really looking at the pathways that we offer for our students at the high school level. This is where our funding from Carl Perkins Grant comes into play. The Perkins Career and Technical Education Act gives the federal funds to increase the focus on academic achievement in our CTE programs. And so for 2022, '23, the award that was given was $20,440.36. We are applying for Carl Perkins, however, with the recent changes with VDOE and some other changes going about. They have not released the number, and we have been told to use that same amount going forward when projecting. So we are using for '23, '24, our grant will consist of the $20,440.36. So what does this money go to? How is it helping our students? For purchase services, you can either have purchase services as one category. The other is your capital outlay and your equipment. The purchase services we're looking at are professional development opportunities for our district, regional, state programs, and activities that teachers can participate in. Also looking at speakers and promotional materials, field trips that target that non-traditional employment opportunity, and special student populations as required by our federal regulations. Industry certification costs, and that includes the testing for industry credentials that we offer to our students. And then student tuition at New Horizons Regional Education Center, so that they can take those courses at no cost. Capital outlay and equipment, additional instructional resources just to support the new CTE classes coming onboard. And so that basically sums up our And so that basically sums up our Carl Perkins grant. The other plan that runs through some of our advisory committees is our local education, our local special education annual plan. Once that is created with our data, we run that through our CAC committee, and CAC has a chance to weigh in and provide some feedback. Our annual plan, main parts, it's a formal agreement between the local school board and VDOE regarding the provision of special education and related services to our students with disabilities. It's basically a receipt of the federal funds that Education of Students with Disabilities contention upon the approval of the plan and its components. The draft is shared with CAC, and it was shared actually April 13th. And funds are used solely for special education personnel and individuals who provide special services that directly impact our students with disabilities. There are two separate funding streams that we pull from. Those are 611 and 619. 611 is for our school-age students with disabilities, and 619 are for preschool students with disabilities. So that would be kind of our I-PoD program and students we're serving below kindergarten age. Funding allocations are all formula-driven. And again, here, much as you saw with our CTE allocations, they have not yet been released for this due to some of our changes at VDOE right now. But we are using the thought process of what 2022, '23 provided. Our PCPS Special Education Plan, we have to have an annual plan that is created, and this is what is shared. And so based on last year's Special Education Plan, 611 is our school-age students, and we're looking at $403,044. This goes towards salary and benefits of one special education teacher, nine paraprofessionals, and two special education bus assistants. Also, purchase services fall under that line item and materials and supplies. Through line 619 for preschool, we're looking at $12,219, and that goes to personal services, purchase services, and materials and supplies. The implementation, all money that is allocated will be utilized for implementation of last year's plan. We also review that through our CAC, and that has to be done yearly. So our federal money that was allocated for this current school year was all spent on salaries and benefits of 12 special education personnel, purchase-related or specialized services for our students with disabilities, and finally, supplies and materials for students with disabilities as well. The next steps as it relates to our plan will be the special education departments will focus on our models of co-teaching. We'll be receiving training and professional development on that, specialized instruction for our teachers who are working with our students with disabilities, looking at lesson plans and especially designing it for our students in need, and creating appropriate services for each identified student in order to develop a strong continuum of services. And that concludes our presentation tonight for instructional updates. Absolutely.
Questions for Ms. Brown?
Do we already have 12 employees?
The 12 employees, yes. The one that was for the '22, '23 school year. We have put that out to hire those 12 employees, and the funds are earmarked. I will have to defer to Mr. Tillot on that if all were hired based on our personnel.
We don't have the numbers for next year, so those are our current year numbers. If you recall, in our budget for next year, we anticipated from growth in our sped program. We've gone from, I have it on top of my head, somewhere around just over 200 students to close to 260, I think. And in that population growth, we've added in the budget two additional positions, instructionally and two parapos for that anticipated growth.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much.
And next, we have a financial update with Ms. Tracy Spence.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is the financial update. The governor returned the House Bill 1400 to the General Assembly without his signature. And the General Assembly reconvened last Thursday, April 12th, and has not approved a budget. In regards to the local funding, the city included $713,788 in additional funding for fiscal year '24, which is $4,722 over the requested amount. The additional funding will be used towards an additional 2% compensation increase for all staff, pending approval by the General Assembly. This additional compensation increase is netted against the reduction of all staff bonuses. The school board, of course, will be having a joint meeting with city council next week on Monday, April 24th, at 6:30 to discuss the budget. And that's about all I have in regards to the financial update at this time.
Thanks. Just a quick question. I know we've talked about it. So how much is the overall raise going to be for staff?
We, if you recall, proposed the governor's budget because when we started the process, that was the number, which was a 5% pay increase with also a one-time bonus. We built our budget around the governor's budget. And of course, as Tracy said, that budget has evolved, as it always does. And the skinny budget was passed, House Bill 1400, which did not include several of the components, including a specific pay raise. Both the House and Senate budgets, when they adjourned, had a up to 7% pay increase. So with working with the city, we've asked them to consider, and they have included in the city manager's budget, the 7% pay increase. And of course, that's contingent on the General Assembly coming back to work in maybe as late as June and passing that budget and it being signed by the governor. So there's still a lot of balls in the air. We have tried to stay as close to it as we can and watch what's transpiring. We were hopeful that when they reconvene, they would jump right on budget and get us a budget that we could work with the city on. So we're keeping our fingers crossed on the 7%. When I went around to each of our four schools and talked with staff about the budget, I included that piece, although our budget that you all passed in March had to be passed in order to get it to the city by the March 31st deadline. Had so many moving parts still out there. And I did mention to them that there was a strong possibility that the city would consider the 7%, which is the highest pay raise in both the House and Senate budgets. And if so, the bonus would likely go away. So of course, when asked employees, would you trade a one-time bonus for a 2% additional pay increase? It's kind of a no-brainer. So the staff is, as we all are, watching what's happening and hopeful that the General Assembly approves that up to 7%. If so, I feel confident that our city will create the matching funds necessary to afford the 7% for all employees.
It did. And I just want to also point out, last year, it was 8% for staff?
6% last year. The governor's budget, which we built it on, and the General Assembly budget, of course, it was the biennium budget, landed on 5 and stayed at 5. So our city afforded us an additional 1%. If this happens, I think it's noteworthy to say that that will be for the city of Pecosin's school employees, all school employees, an 18% pay increase over the last three years, including next year's budget, if that passes. That's extraordinary, and we're very thankful.
Thank you, Mr. Tillot. I just wanted to make sure that we pointed out that to the community because I think that's definitely some hard work that we've done, and we realize that we're usually on the lower tier, and we're trying hard to get where we need to be for our staff.
Thank you very much, Ms. Spence.
And next, we have Dr. Ratliff with their operations update, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair Helsel, Mr. Tillot, and board members. Tonight, I'll be providing the operations update. So we're going to focus mainly on the safety enhancements that we have going on within the schools now. The ballistic shield that we've talked about adding is finally here. The installation for all of the schools is scheduled for the beginning of May. We, it probably will take two to three days per school to get the installation done. And it's, it will require some of the schools to have entryways shut down at some point in time to get everything done. And we'll be working with the principals to determine, you know, the routes in and out of the school for any students or parents or anyone else. Excuse me. We're fortunate, we made a significant investment in this. So all of the entryways, we're going to be able to get covered with this shield. And the timeframe, while we've been talking about it for some time, from purchase order to installation, has been about a four-month process. And essentially, this really has come just because of the manufacturer specifications with this. And if it is not done exactly correct, if it's not installed the right way, if it's not cut the right way, then they will not certify it. So it's a pretty arduous process, and that's where the time has come in. But again, we are actually on the schedule for May 1st to begin the installation at the high school. AEDs, Automated External Defibrillators. If you follow the news, you'll see that there's some potential legislation out there right now that are going to require schools to have AEDs. We're fortunate that we've had AEDs for quite some time, probably longer than I've been here, actually. So currently, we have five division-wide. Those we have, the caveat with the ones that we have is they've really reached the end of life, what we would consider end of life. We, right now, we have one per school. It's either in or around the nurses station, and then the athletic trainer has one to use at athletic events, should that be needed. We are looking a little bit at changing how we're going to place these in schools for the next school year. We're going to jump from five total to nine total. And we're obviously going to replace the ones that we have in and around the nurses stations. Additionally, we're also going to place one in every gym. On top of that, the trainer will keep the one that goes to and from the athletic events. So that will be coming in the very near future. Pecosin primary evacuation routes. So before I really get into this, what, I will give you the caveat that there are sections of the crisis management plans that we do not publish publicly for everyone. And portions of what I'm getting into with the evacuation routes would fall under those items that we really don't publicly publish. So I'll be a little vague, but to give you some ideas about some of what we have been discussing. We've talked, really going back since our walkthroughs at the beginning of the school year, end of the summer, about alternate evacuation routes should something happen at the primary school and kids need to get out. We've actually talked through quite a number of different scenarios that we could potentially follow. The problems that we have found is we have, we have to make sure that by solving one problem, we don't create another problem. And it's been a good bit of discussion. At this point, we think that we have a good plan in place. Where we're at right now is I'm really just waiting on the city of Pecosin and the police department to say, yes, what we've talked about is good to go. And the next thing that we'll do is we'll get quotes for to price out some of the changes that we're talking about making to enhance this for the kids. Surveillance cameras. Before I get into the upgrades that we're going to have with the surveillance cameras, I do want to give you a little bit of a historical perspective. Years and years ago, when we began integrating these cameras into the schools, the plan, and again, this was well before me, the plan had to be to create maximum coverage with minimal cameras. You know, these, they're not cheap, you know? And there's no way you could buy everything to completely cover all the schools at one time. We've been really intentional over the years with the cameras that we've purchased, where we've placed them, and how we've used them. We have truly, over the years, added as many as we can yearly to what we have. About a year ago, we reached the capacity at the elementary school and the high school that we're able to start adjusting the camera locations. We're able to add new cameras to where we can get better points of coverage. And really, the process at the high school and the elementary school is almost complete. Once we get into some of these new cameras that we have, we're almost to that point in those two schools. Fortunately, the redesign of the middle school came with the best possible coverage of the cameras. And we're pretty well-covered in that aspect at that school. So we're, right now, we're working toward replacing the old cameras, repositioning cameras, and adding cameras so we can get better coverage at the primary school. To get full and complete coverage and probably what would be comparable to all of the schools, it's going to take an additional 20 cameras. So again, we're being very smart about how and where we add and when we reposition and what we do. One other note that I will say is we do have a contract with the surveillance system. The provider from the, of where we buy the surveillance cameras, they do actually work, do monthly maintenance on our servers. It is difficult, if you go in to try to pull video and the camera was down or it doesn't work, or it's blurry, or something's broken with it. So we do contract them out monthly to make sure that all of those servers and cameras are working and functioning properly as they should. So in the queue, we do have 30 new surveillance cameras coming in. And at the high school, that will be replacement of some of the old cameras, repositioning of some cameras for better coverage. At the elementary school, it's going to be the same thing, replacing some of your old and outdated cameras and adding some for better coverage. While at the primary school, we're replacing, we're repositioning, and we're adding for better coverage. So like I said, we're fortunate at this point because we have been very intentional over the years in how we've done it, that we're really sitting in a pretty good position. Lobby guard. So if you don't know what lobby guard is, that's when you walk into the schools and you scan your badge and whether you're a visitor, a parent, a student. It's how we kind of manage student check-ins, check-outs, and visitors that may come into the school. That system is in the process of being updated as well. It is actually being updated to a system called Raptor Visitor Management. Raptor actually purchased lobby guard. They bought them out a couple of years ago. But the, the, the Raptor technologies come with a little bit higher price tag than what the lobby guard technologies do. So at this point, Raptor is discontinuing the use of lobby guard. So all of us that have had lobby guard, they are upgrading us to the most current Raptor system that's available. And they're doing that with no additional cost to us and then guaranteeing another year on the service contract at the same cost that we're in. So we're going to be sitting in very good shape there. Raptor, really, it just, it's a, it's a little bit more robust than what lobby guard will do. And it will allow us to have a more centralized district database, increased district visibility, and then real-time visibility. So if we had a concern, if someone was in the school, we actually can, you know, while it's happening, look and log into the system from, really, from any administrative place in the school division. And the last thing that I have for you is we have a couple of contract, annual contract renewals on the consent agenda for tonight. That will be for food services and custodial services. The 2021, '22 school year, we put out an RFP for both of these. ServiceMaster and Aramark were both awarded these contracts. And the contracts were written essentially for a, they were written for a five-year basis, but renewable yearly. So at this point, we are just renewing so we can continue services with the both of those next year. And we would recommend that you do approve that for tonight. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I do have a question regarding the security cameras.
Yes.
Are the police department going to be able to have access to them?
They do have access.
They do already, okay.
That's a good question, Madam Chair. And I wanted to mention that that's an unusual service that Pecosin has that I would bet very few school divisions in the country have, and it's something we're very proud of. We have just an incredible relationship, partnership with Pecosin Police Department. And one of those elements of that partnership is 24-hour protection with they, with access to our camera system so they can watch our schools all day. We also have multiple monitors in each of our schools. So not only the SRO, but office staff and administrators have cameras to, monitors to watch our cameras. So a lot of eyes on the goings and comings. lot of eyes on, uh, the goings and comings of, um, of, uh, people in and out of our schools.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Ms. Ratliff. Ms. Firth, do we have any pu- public comment this evening?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Patrick Godell, if you'll walk us through the consent agenda, please?
Okay. On the consent agenda, we have, uh, the approval of financial reports, the authorization to change appropriation and accept and expend funds in accordance with the tax request, approval of personnel action, approval of minutes of March's regular meeting, work session and closed session, approval to authorize a superintendent to sign contract for custodial services with Service Master Commercial Services, and approval to the superintendent, superintendent to sign a contract for food services with Aramark Educational Services.
Thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Any comments? Okay. Ms. Firth, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Childress?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
I'm going to abstain due to a personal relationship in the personnel matters.
Ms. Everett?
Aye.
Dr. Burbage?
Aye.
Vice Chair Godell?
Aye.
Chair Helsel?
Aye.
Motion passes. Vote is five-zero.
Thank you. Moving on to other matters for consideration, the first one is going to be the consideration of approval of special education school year two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four.
Uh, yeah, we, we intentionally made a report tonight on both of these, um, consent matters.
Just wanted to double-check. Uh, would anyone like to make a motion for?
Motion to approve the, uh, special education plan.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any comments, questions? Okay. Ms. Firth, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Childress?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Everett?
Aye.
Dr. Burbage?
Aye.
Vice Chair Godell?
Aye.
Chair Helsel?
Aye.
Motion passes. Vote is six-zero.
Thank you. The next one is consideration of approv- approval of the Perkins Grant School Year two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four, and that's what Ms. Brown just spoke with us about. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'm going to approve the Perkins Grant as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Okay. Ms. Firth, would you call the vote?
Mr. Childress?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Everett?
Aye.
Dr. Burbage?
Aye.
Vice Chair Godell?
Aye.
Chair Helsel?
Aye.
Motion passes. Vote is six-zero.
Thank you. Next, we have a few con- a consideration for a few different proclamations for Teacher Appreciation Week, School Nutrition, Employee Appreciation Day, and School Nurse Appreciation Day. First up, I'm going to ask Dr. Burbage to read their, our Teacher Appreciation Week one.
Okay. Uh, proclamation for Teacher Appreciation Week of May eighth through twelfth of two thousand twenty-three. Whereas teachers work to open students' minds to ideas, knowledge, and dreams, and teachers fill many roles as listeners, explorers, role models, motivators, and mentors. And whereas teachers continue to influence us long after our school days end, and whereas we honor the dedicated men and women, and their passion and skills to educating our children, because we believe teaching is one of the most valuable professions in this country. And whereas each and every teacher in the City of Pecosin is essential to student success, and their efforts result in, in, in increased student achievement throughout the city, and greater confidence in the school system. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, on this eighteenth day of April in the year two thousand twenty-three, the School Board of the City of Pecosin, Virginia, at the week of May eighth through twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, be hereby celebrated as Teacher Appreciation Week in all Pecosin City Public Schools.
Thank you, Dr. Burbage. And I'm going to ask CJ, Mr. Childress, to walk us through the Nutrition Employee Appreciation Day proclamation.
Proclamation, School Nutrition Employee Appreciation Day, May fifth, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas nutritious meals at school are a central part of the school day, and whereas the staff of Pecosin City Public School Meals and Nutrition Department are committed to provide healthful nutritious meals to the school division's children, and whereas the hard-working staff who prepare and serve school meals help nurture our children through their daily interactions and support, and now, therefore, be it proclaimed on the eighteenth day of April in the year two thousand twenty-three by the School Board of the City of Pecosin, Virginia, that Friday, May fifth, two thousand twenty-three, be celebrated in all Pecosin City Public Schools as School Lunch Hero Day.
I'll ask Ms. Martin if you'll agree through the School Nurse Appreciation Day.
Sure. School Nurse Appreciation Day, May tenth, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas children are the future, and by investing in them today, we are ensuring the world for tomorrow. And whereas all students should have their health needs safely met while in the school setting. And whereas school nurses are professional nurses that advance the well-being, academic success, and lifelong achievements of all students by providing a critical safety net for our nation's most fragile children. And whereas school nurses act as a liaison to the school community, parents, and healthcare providers on behalf of children's health. And whereas school nurses support the health and educational success of children and youth by developing and providing programs and leadership. And whereas school nurses understand the link between health and learning, and are in a position to make a positive difference for children every day. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed on this eighteenth day of April in the year two thousand twenty-three by the School Board of the City of Pecosin, Virginia, that May tenth, two thousand twenty-three, be hereby celebrated as School Nurse Day in all Pecosin City Public Schools.
Thank you. Now, would anyone like to make a motion to approve all of the proclamations?
Motion to approve all of the proclamations.
Second.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Ms. Firth, would you call the vote, please?
Mr. Childress?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Everett?
Aye.
Dr. Burbage?
Aye.
Vice Chair Godell?
Aye.
Chair Helsel?
Aye.
Motion passes. Vote is six-zero.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to communications and/or other matters by the School Board and/or superintendent, and I'll start with Ms. Tillot.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nothing further.
Thank you. Lexi.
Like last time, I'm going to start with the high school.
I love it.
Pecosin High School is excited to be moving forward into the fourth quarter and finishing the year strong. This past month has been very busy. Spring sports are in full swing. There's a game happening almost every night. Some support our Islanders. Our Odyssey of the Mine team competed at states and will be traveling and competing in the world competition at Michigan State University in May. Our newly-created Roquepa Social Studies Honor Society inducted its, inducted its members yesterday. Our art three and four classes are featured in our lobby area with our views of Pecosin Gallery, and the work is exceptional. We are excited for our Spanish classes and their intercultural Columbia Spanish presentation with Professor Navarro this Thursday. We are looking forward to our upcoming end-of-year festivities. Prom tickets went on sale today. Be sure to get your contracts and guest forms submitted. AP testing begins May second. Faculty and admin went to First Colonial High School this past month to tour their One Lunch program. Staff were enthusiastic and found One Lunch provided students with a choice and opportunities for extracurricular and instructional support. PHS is looking forward to piloting One Lunch in May. Students and families can be on the lookout for more information regarding schedules and opportunities. As always, check out the Island Times for latest dates and information. Now, the middle school. Pecosin Middle School has been busy, and it's hard to believe that we are already in the fourth quarter. The Drug Abuse Resistance Education Program, commonly referred to as DARE, is in full swing at Pecosin Middle School. DARE is a police officer-led series of classroom lessons that teaches students how to resist peer pressure and live product- and live productive drug and violence-free lives. Officer Gills, the PMS Resource Officer, is leading our DARE program and providing PMS students information and strategies on how to make safe and responsible decisions for their futures. Seventh graders are receiving ten lessons over multiple weeks, weeks that will cover the following topics: choices, risks, conflict cus- conflicts slash conversation, the keeping it real, refusal strategy, refusal, refusal strategies, real standing for refuse, explain, avoid, and leave, norms, feelings, and support networks. On top of this, sixth and seventh grades are receiving lessons over, on over-the-counter and prescription medications. These lessons cover the differences between, between the two, and how to read labels. Eighth grade will be receiving lessons on the dangers of vaping and dangers of opioid use, misuse, and abuse. All of these classes are interactive and equip students with the knowledge and skill sets made to make informed decisions and support a healthy lifestyle. In honor of Read Across America and School Library Month, PMS students are being challenged to read something new and complete a big bingo card. Students who complete at least one row on the bingo card by April twenty-first will be entered to win a prize. We are also hosting the PMS Spring Scholastic Book Fair at the week of May fifteenth. Book Fair Family Night will be on Thursday, May eighteenth, from five to seven PM in the PMS library, and all are invited, and we hope to see you there. PMS, PMS is excited to be hosting the Middle School Dance on Friday, April twenty-eighth, from six to eight PM in the PMS gym. We are proud to announce that our Odyssey of the Mine team placed first in the state competition last weekend, and is now advancing to the world finals competition, beginning on May twenty-fourth at Michigan State University. PMS would also like to congratulate our April Golden Bowl Students of the Month, Mia Green for sixth grade, Sohori Sanchez for seventh grade, and Lillian Powell for eighth grade. Now, the elementary school. The past several weeks have been busy but productive at PES. Our fifth graders have been studying the ocean floor. They made Sultao replicas of the, in class of the ocean floor. Their creativity and engagement with, with this project was exciting. Also, a parent, Ms., Mrs. Gentner, came in and talked to all the fifth grade about being a marine biologist. Students were definitely intrigued by all she had to share. Our fifth graders also took a walking field trip to Pecosin Middle School. We are so thankful for PMS's generosity and hospitality. Students got to try out locker combinations and learned some organization strategies to keep them on par when they first arrive at the middle school. Our first annual March Mathness was a huge success. Teachers from all grade levels helped create engaging and fun games that included fun manipulatives. Every student who came left with some items to recreate these math games and even play more at home. Our third graders have been working on biographies with famous peo- biographies of famous people. They even bottled some people of a fa- of a famous person of their choosing. These projects were amazing and looked so true to life. This week, after spring break, an unusual visitor showed at the Pecosin Elementary School, a fluffy little hamster named Humphrey. We kick off our One School, One Book program. All staff members, even bus drivers and student alike, are reading The World According to Humphrey. Humphrey even gets to visit the classrooms. The students are super excited about having him around. This past Saturday, we held our Color-thon in conjugation with PPS. It was a hit. Lots of families from both schools came out and participated and enjoyed being colored with powder at the end. The weather was perfect, and we are grateful for our PTO for sponsoring such a wonderful event. This week, we have our Scholastic Book Fair happening. Students will be able to purchase books during their library class time. We also have Family Night on Thursday from five to seven PM. Our PTO does so many amazing things for our students and teachers. This past week, every student at PES has gotten to pick out a free scholastic book to take home. The students just love the Baguette Books sponsored by the PTO. This week, we will celebrate Month of the Military Child by participating in activities each day and purpling up on Wednesday in support of all branches of the military. Wednesday is also our Field Day. Ms. Barnes has worked very diligently to provide a wonderful day of fun activities, and the weather is looking to be perfect. This looks to be, this looks to be all of the many happenings going on at PES recently and in the near future. And last, but certainly not least, the primary school. At PPS, we have had some exciting events and happenings in our school. We want to thank the PPS PTO for sponsoring a MAD Science Assembly and the Baguette Books and Color Run event in April. The MAD Science Assembly was high-energy and interactive for all students that were able to attend on our early dismissal day in March. For the Baguette Books distribution, our PTO worked very hard to research book titles and came to school with several high-interest books. E- every child got to go home with a book that day. The Color Run, sponsored along with the PES PTO, was held this past Saturday, and it was great fun. The month we celebrate, the month, this month, we celebrate Month of the Military Child, and we have already, we have already had a great fun with red, white, and blue star stripes on Monday. We are ho- we are hosting our PPS Art and Music Night tomorrow. All students will have artwork on display, and will have several musical performances. Kindergarten and second-grade students will be doing live performances in the gym, and first graders will have video performance, which will be rolling in the library. Don't worry, first-grade families, your live performance will be coming in June when you sing the National Anthem at Peninsula Pilots Game. In the classrooms, we have begun our end-of-year screenings and assessments in grades PK through twelve, PK through two, excuse me. We are learning about fractions until your time in second grade, measuring in first grade, and learning about the different ways to collect data and create graphs in kindergarten. We continue to use Read Alouds during literacy blocks and focus on grammar vocabulary and comprehension of these books across the week. Field trip season has begun, and we have first graders heading to the Children's Museum in Portsmouth next week, and kindergarten, kindergartners going to the zoo in May. Our PTO will be looking for volunteers for Field Day, which is scheduled in May twenty-sixth. Stay tuned for more information. Thank you.
Thank you, Lexi. Mr. Childress?
Yeah, I love those updates. Um, I'd just like to thank all the teachers, all the volunteers, the PTO, the community, and all the employee, police officers, anything that are keeping our kids safe and letting activities like this go. You guys are what helps our community and our education, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
I'd like to recognize the, um, Students of the Month for March and April, two fantastic young ladies that I, I can't wait to see what happens for their future. Um, great representation of what Pecosin City Schools is capable of doing. Um, I think we would be remiss not to recognize the PTOs across the board. Um, I'm hearing some pretty awesome things that have been happening, and, and I don't think we would be where we are without them. Uh, Mr. Dr. Ratliff, I'd like to thank you as well for your security update. I know that that is, uh, very important on our staff's list of things, and, um, at parents as well. So, appreciate that. Uh, the attention to those matters is, um, vital. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Everett?
Okay. Um, I want to thank all of the administrators that show up every month. I know it's hard, um, but we appreciate you and what you do for the school systems. Um, it's good to see your faces. Um, Kelly Purdy, your updates on the web pages are awesome, and I don't want, I want you to know, it doesn't go unnoticed. You're very valuable to us. And, Ms. Brown, you've made a hit with the, um, employees at the Pecosin City Public Schools, and I'm, kudos to you. You came in, running, and we really do appreciate it, and I appreciate Mr. Tillot putting you in that position. So, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Burbage?
Yes, I'd like to, uh, congratulate, uh, our March and April Students of the Month, Tyra, Lisa. I'd also like to congratulate, uh, John for winning the Virginia State Chess Championship. And I'd also like to congratulate the Odyssey of the Mine team for placing first in the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Godell?
Just echoing everyone else with the congratulations to the Students of the Month, and also just, uh, for the building administrators, teachers, and students, just, uh, best of luck with the EP exams, SOLs, end-of-year exams, all that stuff coming up, uh, and in the work, and we're looking forward to seeing the great results.
And I agree with everybody else. I'm not going to take too long with comments, but I would be remiss if I didn't mention, um, Dr. Ratliff, thank you for your update on AEDs. I think nine is a great start. So, as I think about all the times that we have sports at different locations, and I think it would be amazing to have one at each sporting event that we have. So, it's a great start, some work to do. Um, but thank you all for everything. It's certainly appreciated very much. With that, Ms. Firth, do we have any material for board review?
Ma'am.
Thank you. So, we're going to go ahead and adjourn, and we're going to have our work session.